I want to thank everyone for coming. This is the Prattville Planning Commission. My name is Tim Smith. I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission. What the Planning Commission is made up of is several volunteers. We are here for our love for the city of Prattville and to show the type of growth that we would like to see Prattville go forth on. There are a couple of folks that are here. There are also employees of the city. And there's a city council person that is there, and the mayor as well. The rest of us are here because we want to be here and we volunteer our time. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you please call roll?
Mayor Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Chairman Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Gardner.
Here.
Chief Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Carpenter.
Mr. Heineman.
Here.
Mr. McAlley.
And Mr. Nelson.
All right. I see that the two pieces of all business are being held. And we have new business. Yes. They got both of them. Oh, you might be correct. Oak Creek Platte III. What is going on with that? There y'all go.
Yes, sir.
I saw it.
Representative from Larry speaks and associates may want to come up and speak to this. But if, and I'm going to go from my understanding from a couple of days ago, is that the Water Board is still trying to address the question that Chief Johnson had concerning water service to that subdivision. And I think it's appropriate, if the owner is willing, that y'all hold that again for another month until that can be worked out. But you would need to have authorization of the owner to do that.
Okay. Mr. Gill.
Yes, I'm Greg Gillen, Larry speaks and associates. And with the Water Works Board, we're working on the water pressure issues. They're actually putting in a pressure-reducing valve in two locations. And they're in the process of making these items work that take care of the water pressure and the fire flow problems. And we would like to table this until we can, or hold it, I think is the correct word, until that point in time when they get that in order.
Okay.
Which hopefully is in the next two to three weeks. But I've heard that twice now.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to hold it.
Motion to hold.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. And please speak into your microphone. Several folks have asked that we do that. All right, there's been a motion and a second to hold. All in favor, send a five by raising your right hand. opposed, like sign. It is held. Now, on the second one, the reply has been held, and we will address that later. Next is new business.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Oh, yes, sir.
The second item, you have a letter that was sent to us about an hour ago asking that consideration of this reply be withdrawn.
Okay.
So what you just basically need to do is somebody make a motion to withdraw that from your agenda.
Got it.
That would take your.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? opposed, like sign. It has been removed. Now. We good? All right. The next one is we have two items of new business, just gauging from the crowd. Is there anybody here with a Horace Davis property? That would be the location is County Road Four and Jensen Road. Okay. All right. You want to, we can knock that out first and then go to the next, or do y'all want to? Okay. That'd be fine. This is a public hearing, and the public is encouraged to come up and speak. But just so we can understand what is going on and what we're talking about, can you tell, tell us briefly what we're addressing, or just so the public knows?
Mr. Chair, I can make that presentation from the city's perspective, or we can let the petitioner make that.
Just, that would be fine if the petitioner just wants to let us know what's going on to, so they might answer their question. And this is just a brief, just so she knows what's going on. It doesn't have to be long. You're going to come back up and talk about it in just a second, but this is, might answer every question I have.
Stephen speaks, and Larry speaks and associates. The Davis family's owned this property for decades. Mr. Davis, Horace Davis, is the son of Ms. Davis. She's now deceased. The property is bounded on the north by County Road Four. Jensen Road going into the IP property, which abuts the property on the south. This is Jensen here. There's some industrial use to the east. There's also some industrial use to the north. I think, I've seen a map, part of the city limits actually touch this northeast corner. I've seen a map from that, from Joel's office. It has been farmland for years. Because of all the industrial around it, they're requesting to zone the property industrial for industrial use.
Okay. Thank you. Let the record show that Mr. Nelson is in the meeting. All right. Now, this is a public hearing regarding County Road Four and Jensen Road, Horace Davis being the petitioner. Does anybody want to come speak on that? Ma'am, that would be you. Please sign in, by the way. I did not tell you that. I need to be better at that. Sign in and just register who you are. And then when you come up, tell us where you live and your name.
Mr. Chair, I do see quite a few more seats up front.
Okay. There are seats up front. If anybody wants to like to sit down, there's places for you to sit. Come, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Tanzania Johnson, and I live at 212 County Road Four West, right at that intersection in which these gentlemen are talking about the industrial proposal. I heard him mention several things about where it's going, but my concern is what is it going to do? That family might have owned that land for decades, but my family has also been living at that intersection for decades. And I'm very much concerned about what it's going to do to that intersection. That's a very small community that we live in. I can't visualize exactly what's going to be there and how it's going to affect that small area. I know on the both ends of that community, there is light industrial buildings. Don't know why they have not considered that, but I have great concerns on congestion, how it's going to affect us. We're not that far from those two corners that he mentioned, the north going into the International Paper Plant. So even though all of his information that he gave you about it being farmland and it having industrial properties or purposes, it's not answering any of my questions that I'm concerned about, which is how it's going to affect me, my family, and individuals that already live. So those who did not answer.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Please come forward. The public hearing portion of that, this particular item, is now closed. We need to go ahead and read this in. Would you do so, please?
Yes.
Resolution zoning request to M1 County Road Four, Jensen Road. Horace H. Davis, petitioner, May 21, 2015. Whereas Horace H. Davis has applied for zoning of the property shown in attachment A, in where the property be zoned and located outside the city limits at the southeast end and southwest corner of Jensen Road and Otoga County Road intersection, in where as the petitioner wishes to zone the property to M1 Light Industrial. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on May 21, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission has commenced the zoning of said property to M1.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Is there a second? All right.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Who's second?
Did you second?
I will. I second.
Thank you.
I thought somebody's second.
Yeah, that's all right. You want to come up and talk with them, or what we got? Petition?
Yes, sir. I, just to kind of give you some background and follow along with the staff report that was repaired on this property. As Mr. Speaks stated, this is roughly 230 acres. It's contained in three separate parcels, all of them south of County Road Four, kind of divided by Jensen Road. You can see that here. You see here on the map, that's these three parcels just south of the Spring Hill neighborhood. The Spring Hill neighborhood is the area outlined in yellow. This area is outside the city limits. The petitioner has a concurrent request for annexation that's running through and should show up before the city council at some point. As you recall, with the 2009 law, they can ask for zoning prior to annexation, and that zoning, if approved by the city council, is good for 180 days for them to also get the annexation completed. So that's the process they are following. Just looking at the request in general and whether or not it is consistent with the city's master plan, in your, in your package, you have copies of the future land use map, and it shows that this area is set up generally to be industrial. Now, that's, that's looking at what's around it. I think it's very important that the Planning Commission also consider the impacts, not just for this property, but past impacts of industrial zoning and uses around the Spring Hill neighborhood. Just a short history lesson here. Jensen Road was added. It is not a road that was in the neighborhood originally. It was added as an access to International Paper back, or Union Camp, when they arrived in Prattville. And somebody may need to help me with that. Mr. Gardner, you may recall, it was the late 60s, was it not?
It was in 66.
66. So that was the, an addition to the neighborhood, which basically split the neighborhood. If you spend any time in that area, certain times of the day, trying to cross with the four lanes with busy truck traffic, or with the employees, can be a little difficult. So that's an impact on the neighborhood. The city's first separate industrial park is here, to the east of the Spring Hill neighborhood, off of County Road Four and Washington Ferry. And then the city later on purchased and developed the west industrial park, basically on the west side of Spring Hill. So we have Union Camp, then now IP, and those industrial properties, we basically have bracketed Spring Hill neighborhood. Now, that's not to say that the request for industrial is not warranted. It is simply to say that the commission, and I would say that it is probably a good property for industrial. The question is, how do you make sure that there are no adverse impacts from that zoning to the Spring Hill neighborhood? And I think that warrants some further examination by this board to look closer at that, whether that be some screening, whether it be one of these parcels is not zoned for industry, whether the frontage against the neighborhood is zoned something different. I can't really tell you at this point. I think it's, it's something that can be worked cooperatively with the petitioner, but it's something this board needs to look at before you make a recommendation with the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Let's see if we hear from the petitioner. Mr. Stephen, would you care to address us?
Mr. Duke's correct. We've spent, we met with Mr. Duke a couple of times on this piece of property before even coming to the Planning Commission with the proposal for rezoning. We'll be glad to work with this, with the group if we need to look further at the, any kind of, if we want to do a screen or some other type of buffer with that. I believe what he's talking about is this section right through here.
Yes, sir.
That's the section that we've noticed in the field. This side is all more industrial. This side over this side is more industrial as well. But we could do some screening. We'll be glad to work with the, with the Planning Commission if that's, if that's what the Planning Commission sees as appropriate. I think that the good piece, the good, and I think Joel touched on it, the good point about this piece of property is it is a large tract, so that it allows a lot of different options out there for an industrial use at a later date. The Davises do not have anybody right now in mind for this piece of property. They're trying to get it prepared and ready for a potential use in the future.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And just, Ms. Johnson, you asked the type of business. It's, they're requesting M1, which would be light industry operations, no obnoxious or offensive or detrimental to neighboring properties by reason of dust, smoke, vibration, noise, odor. And the type of businesses would be ice cream plants, creameries, cold storage plants, ice plants, bottling, central distribution plants, baking plants, textile mills, dyeing plants, warehouses, dry cleaners, laundries, trailer camps, similar type of industries or businesses, and all businesses or services of manufacturing uses are permitted. And on, well, on District 8, that goes into that. But it would be light industry is what they're looking at. Is there, there's been a discussion of us looking into this further?
I'd like to ask them to hold and get back with Joel Duke, and let's get a better plan to look at before we move forward on this.
Okay. Do, are you, to committee, and then we, ask a committee come together?
Committee, Joel, or?
I'm thinking.
That's up to y'all.
Do you want to go into a meeting with them and come up with something, or just letting him?
Mr. Smith, I would, I would prefer that, we've had several meetings, and I think it's important at this point that the Planning Commission provide the guidance, so that they understand where you're going to come down as far as your recommendation for the city council.
Okay. Well, then let's put together. All right, you want to amend it to a?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion that we create a committee to work on this, and then bring it back after the committee meeting.
All right. Motion for, to commit a committee? Is there a second?
Second, if it's chairman.
Thank you. Do I need to vote on it, or we just go on?
Well, you could select.
That sounds like. Would you like to be on that committee?
Yes, I would.
All right. Ms. Heineman, would you care to be on that committee, sir?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you. All right, and I'll do it myself, and if we need anybody, if anybody else would like to do it, that'd be three of us. We will get with you on timing and contact both of you on what we will do. All right. Next item is zoning to, the request is owned to R4, multifamily residence. R4 zoning is a type of zoning which does include apartments. That is the Laney property. It is located on Highway 14 and Old Ridge Road. Larry speaks and associates is the petitioner as well, or the representative for the petitioner, which is Laney Properties. We need, basically tell us what you want to do, and you can share it with others where they can see it, and then we will have our public meeting.
I'm going to move aside if you pass the attention of our hearing.
Hmm?
You have a question.
Well, you don't have to speak in the phone, microphone. You can just get right up there by the, yeah, that's fine. We've, we've seen it.
Basically, the Laney property is located at the intersection of Alabama Highway 14 and what was the old Ridge Road that was closed off in this particular area, and it was rerouted to come back to the second, last signal that comes into 2015. And at this point in time, the property that's on the west side of the proposed new road that will connect from the relocated Old Farm Lane back into Old Ridge Road on, the name's right, is the Long Lewis Development. And as part of that development, a new roadway is being built that reconnects. And in this proposal, we're proposing that that section of property between Hollybrook, the new roadway section, and the road that's north of the Long Lewis site be developed into an R4-type development. Now, this was submitted as about 11.82 acres in the original submittal. And since that point in time, the Lanys have made a decision to donate two acres of property to Fire Station, which would be located on the corner, right here, south of Hollybrook, along Old Ridge Road, and north of the new road. And basically, at this point in time, that's the request.
Okay. Thank you. Just short and sweet. Ladies and gentlemen, this is going to be a public hearing. The public is encouraged to come and speak. Now, we're, again, we're all here as representatives of the city. We are volunteers and/or voluntold to serve. We are, we will stay here as long as we possibly need to stay here, and everybody come up and speak. Now, if somebody has already made the particular point that was stressed or told, and for time constraints, I would ask that you limit your comments to a couple of minutes. The, we're, yeah, absolutely. Councilman Brown, you may come and speak first. I'll ask that you come and register and then address the podium. We can. Yeah. Thank you.
I'm Denise Brown. I live at 804 Wynwood Drive.
Okay.
I'm here today to speak to you as the councilperson for District Three. I believe I have two different perspectives to represent from this position. First and foremost is to represent the interest of the residents of District Three. And second, to look at what is in the best interest of the city. So first, I'd like to talk to you about the homeowners of District Three. I've heard their perspective on many, many aspects, and I'm sure they'll speak to the individual issues that they have with it. I have personally communicated with over 100 residents through email and phone calls. I've spoken with residents of Hollybrook, River Chase North, Glenbrook, and Pendlebrook. In this 100-plus conversations, both verbal and through email, there has not been one supporter of this rezoning request. Not one. Not one person. This issue speaks to their quality of life, which is why they selected their homes and our community in the first place. There are numerous concerns that they have, which I'm sure you're all about to hear, but one of the primary issues to me is the increased traffic. You have to agree that this is an issue to contend with, given the size of the rezoning area requested. Now, secondly, is this in the best interest of the city? This piece of real estate sits as a gateway into Prattville, much as Target Shopping Center does on the Cobb's Ford Road property. As a city, we already have an investment here. We offered an attractive package to Long Lewis to keep them in Prattville and Otoga County because of the value to our schools and our tax revenues. We have an investment in infrastructure. We need to protect this for future revenue generation so that we can continue to maintain the high level of services provided by our city to all our residents. This land would allow for commercial growth of businesses to service the residents of these existing neighborhoods. It is a much better usage of this valuable property that would benefit all the residents of these growing neighborhoods, as well as the city as a whole. So I ask you respectfully to reject this rezoning request as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Brown, there's a, if you could come back just for one second, wait. I have a question. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Oh, Ms. Brown, as a, I appreciate all the work you've put in. I've had the same phone calls, same concerns. I'm going to ask you a question, but it's directed to the crowd. This is a way to skirt the rules. If you are against this and you're standing, I want you to raise your hand. If you are sitting, I want you to stand up, please. That's enough said. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir. If you would like to speak, you can go on and sign in. I think Ms. Brown spoke for everyone, but if you'd like to say anything else, you are welcome to. Thank you, sir. Come on in and tell us who you are.
Thank y'all. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm a resident of River Chase North. I've been there for seven years. I chose River Chase North because of the quality of life, as Ms. Brown pointed out. In the past few months, with the addition of the traffic light at Old Farm Lane, which was sorely needed, we've had an increase in traffic congestion between Old Ridge Road and I-65 on a daily basis. When you add in the car dealership, the growth that we all know will come to the new Old Farm Lane area. The new fast food restaurant is going up. Traffic's just going to get worse. Another concern I have, back in January, when this piece of property was first zoned for the car dealership, I had a conversation with the city planner, Mr. Joel Duke, who told me that if you drew a line from the intersection of the old Old Farm Road where it meets the new Old Farm Road, right behind the bank, across to approximately the Guardian Credit Union Building, everything north of that line was reserved strictly for single-family housing because of some sort of, I don't know, I don't remember the language he used, but it was some sort of reservation or the type of land or whatever. This sits right in that area. So either going against the, the proposal is to go and going against that reservation, or someone gave me some false information. I'm with all the rest of the people here. I'm totally against this. I also have a concern that as a resident of River Chase North, the people in our neighborhood did not receive notification from the City of this meeting. We heard it from our friends in the other neighborhoods. We're within the distance that the law requires in Section 115232 to notify people. It bothers me a lot that we didn't receive notification as we did the first time.
Yes, sir.
In the future, I would request that we all receive notification, because this does affect all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good luck, y'all. Thank you. Now, again, we are here. If somebody would like to do it, address us and come on and talk.
I am relatively new to Alabama.
Yes, ma'am. Just tell us your name and your address.
Debbie Anther.
And your address?
754 Glenbrook Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
In Glenbrook, the subdivision.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Debbie.
Is the petitioner Laney Properties here by any chance?
Representative is. I know that, that they're representative for here.
If there is one here, I would like to offer him a piece of real estate, because that's what's going to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we are all who have invested, I have invested inheritance money into our home. And it's not just a house. This is a home. This is a home for four children to come to, for five grandchildren to come to. This is a home where I plan on renewing our wedding vows in. This is, I did not move to Prattville, Alabama, to have a low housing apartment complex to be put right down the street from me. When we bought our property, we knew that we had River Chase North, we knew that we had Pendlebrook, and we knew we had Hollybrook. That was not a problem. It's a, it is a family, and let me stress this, this is a family area, not for apartment complexes. complexes. I understand there's a four dealership coming in. That is gonna be facing Highway 14, and that is for commercial property. But back where we are, no, it's not. It has not been designated for commercial property.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Would anybody else care to speak?
My name's William Mayfield.
Yes, sir.
I live at 2279 Gathering Way, Pendlebrook subdivision.
Yes, sir.
I represent myself and the Pendlebrook HOA Board. I also represent seventy-one people who sent me emails stating their name, their address, who live in the residence near us, and also the opposition to this project. This project is wrong for many reasons, but, uh, I'm pretty sure you already know them, but I'll let me go ahead and express a few of them. The majority of the people in this area have moved here from other areas, if you haven't figured it out. They moved here from Montgomery, they moved here from Wetumka, they moved here from Millbrook for many reasons. And the main reason is because bad planning by those cities. People invest $250,000 to $450,000 on their houses, and then the city would decide to allow the apartment building to move in and destroy the property values. Now... Now, this city has a, a comprehensive plan, I call it a master plan, but on that master plan, it states clearly that this area to, wanting to be rezoned, is meant to be retail, commercial.
Yes, sir.
Nowhere on there does it say apartments.
You are correct.
So right there by your own plan, it shouldn't be changed.
Yes, sir.
And just, uh, furthermore, just a little bit more, there's five hundred houses in that area. I had no idea until I started passing out flyers. But, uh, I actually ran out. But, uh, there's five hundred houses in that area now. Stone Marten plans to build another thirteen hundred. If you allow these apartments to go in this area, you will stop the fastest-growing area in this city. You will cut... You just won't put a, um, a knife in the heart of the city of Prattville, but you're gonna put a knife in the city, uh, in, in the Ataga County. If you don't realize, the Ataga County Commission doesn't have a lot of tax money no more. I know the city of Prattville and the Ataga County share funds sometimes to build special projects, roads, and stuff like that. Ataga County don't have a lot of money. And the reason is because Elmore County owns all the growth, from the, from the Chevy dealer all the way to the interstate. That's all Elmore County. And poor Ataga County has no money. Well, you're gonna take the, one of the last areas that Ataga County has to develop into a Sam's Club, Costco, Texas Roadhouse, and you're gonna put apartments there. That makes no sense.
Again, there's a petitioner requesting that we change a zoning. The city, the city does not, or the, the city does not do the...
Well, let me address it to Langley. Take your project somewhere else. If it's not wanted, I may not.
Yes. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayfield?
Yes, sir.
If you will, uh, why don't you just a, address the, uh, commission and...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. I apologize.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We know for economic reasons, we're gonna need to do this project, but the main thing is, we're, the city of Prattville is called a preferred community. Well, if you allow it to be destroyed by bad planning, we're no longer gonna be the preferred community. We're gonna be the community that people wanna move out of.
Yes.
So please, work with us, the community, the five hundred houses already there, and the future thirteen hundred houses. Vote no on this today and kill this bad plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, ma'am. How are you, sir? Did you sign in?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Maurice Barnes, and I live on 569 Astrid Oak Drive. Um, not to be long, but I wanna give a little history lesson. When I lived, when I moved here from, um, Birmingham, I went to Alabama State University. I had an apartment that was right off the Eastern Boulevard. It was called Eagle Landing. It was in the area of Eastern Boulevard, where they go in the corner right before you meet Troy Highway. There's a Walmart there. Around the corner was, uh, Montgomery Mall. For a short period of time, the city of Montgomery, when they started to renovate the low-housing projects downtown Montgomery, they moved most of those peoples to an apartment complex and made that apartment complex a low-housing apartment complex. Now, very quickly, everything in this area starts to disintegrate. For one, um, people's houses started to be vandalized, cars, they put up a, they blocked off a major road to keep people from that housing project going off into the subdivisions and breaking into people's houses. Second, Montgomery Mall is totally gone now. Just because that, that, that area, the people that moved to that area took down everything in that area. It was a, a new, um, movie theater that, that had just been built. It went away. The Montgomery Mall went away. Um, and a lot of other businesses in that area went away. So I say that to say that, um, where I live at now, I refinanced, I moved into that house in 2009. We had it built. I had to refinance after three years. Shortly af... And then during that process, I found out my property value had already went down $25,000, just because of the overall housing market. Now, if we put a low-housing project in that area and my property value continues to go down, I'm pretty sure a lot of other people around here, property value would go down also. So once again, I'm, I'm in unison with everybody else here. I say no to this project.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Uh, my name's Casey Brooks, and, uh, I live at 1802 Riverton. So I'm the guy who, you know, like that guy on the left side of the Battle of the Bulge. I get to look right at this. I'm the house on the corner that is proposed for all this stuff. And I just wanna tell you, I think I represent a lot of the type of new residents you're getting in Prattville. I'm military. I chose to live here. I chose to live here because this is a good city, and I wanted to invest in it. And I've invested my money, my time, and I'm still in boxes, literally. And I'm here today to ask you to say no to this, simply because a lot of people will say our property values are this, but me and my family are gonna be looking across the street at this low-income housing and, you know, not casting aspersions, but I have to worry about it. I have to worry about the traffic. I have to worry about what might move from there over across the street. I'm the first guy. So I'm asking you to consider, this is the face of what happens if you rezone, is that I gotta lose property value, but I also gotta start worrying. Uh, you know, I live here now, I wanna be a part of this community, and I'm just asking you to consider that.
And just, I wanna, thank you for, for speaking. And I wanna clarify one thing for the, the, the whole situation. Nobody is saying what type of housing. And it, it would be apartments. It could very well be luxury apartments that are condominiums, but we don't know what would go there. And so we can't cast judgment.
Well, Commissioner, I, I appreciate that. And I also have to tell you, driving here, I passed at least two apartment complexes that are still got vacancy. So it's not just that it hurts us, it's unnecessary.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Come on up.
Good afternoon. Um, I wanna thank our councilwoman, first of all. Um, I was one of those many hundreds that sent emails and correspondence. Uh, my family...
What's... I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Tammy Brown.
Tammy, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, my husband and I moved here over a year ago. Uh, I became a dean at a local university in Montgomery. So I looked within a fifty-mile radius for housing, um, all the way from Pike Road, uh, which was my other choice, but I decided on Prattville, it's where our local church is, uh, now. But I wanna mention, I wanna, uh, say that I agree with everything, just for the record, that everybody said, but in a matter of time, I'm not gonna repeat all of that. But I would like to say that there are two things that haven't been mentioned. I see a lot of people exercising on that road. It's a very narrow road, and if you ride on it right now, today, you'll see tons of potholes on the side because two larger vehicles can't pass one another on the road. So if you think about the infrastructure, just having to expand the road, there's no yard unless you put it right by somebody's fence. Um, there's no sidewalks for walking. So nobody's mentioned the foot traffic. Uh, when I first moved here, I noticed lots of people crossing the high, the four-lane road over to Walmart from that apartment complex. I mean, it's very hard not to hit somebody at night toting, you know, grocery sacks from that shopping center to that apartment complex. So what about those people, what about the foot traffic? Do they pass through the fields to the ABC liquor store, or to the red box at the gas station, or to any of those, uh, convenience areas that are gonna be right there along that road? What about people walking? But I didn't move here because I wanted to live in a gated community. I don't wanna have to, us to put a gate and have a code to get into our neighborhood because of people just walking through our neighborhood, or coming to use our pool that we pay, you know, lots of money per month to use and keep up and maintain and lawn care. And it's not even the, the recency or what kind of apartments, it's the long term. In ten years, are they gonna love that place like we love our home? Is it gonna be in the same hands? Are the people gonna take care of it? Are they gonna keep the facade up? What, you know, we even restrict the height of signs in our city, so people can't compete about the height of their advertisement. So why would you let somebody build a house bigger than the house next door that's twice as big to tower over them? That's a family's home. It's not a sign on the side of the road that's an advertisement. So it's safety. It's, there's no way people can walk there or exercise right now. It's not built like that, and, um, I appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Hey, ma'am.
My name is Willie Mixon. I live at 101 St. Croix Creek Court in the Hollybrook section. I've been there seventeen years. We've been through this before. Before all those houses were built on the other side of Old Ridge Road, we had the same meeting when they tried to come in here four, five years ago, I'm not sure which one, and tried to put up low-rent apartment complexes. We had the meeting up there at the, uh, school academy. This, when that was voted down, one of the things that was said was, okay, we're gonna build houses, which was fine. They also said they were gonna widen the road. The road hasn't been widened yet, okay? We still have the same little road. We still have people trying to walk up and down that road every morning, or myself, when I be doing my exercise. If you put those apartments in there, the people that live on that back row, they're gonna lose their privacy, because the apartments will be two, what, two or three stories high, so you're gonna be able to look in their backyard. Nobody wants that, okay? And we have a nice, quiet neighborhood. We don't have any problems. You, very seldom do we have the police out there, very seldom do we have the fire department out there. And if you put these apartments in there, everything is going to change. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Councilman? My name is Peter Goh. Um, I live at 762 Glenbrook Boulevard. Um, I, I kinda wanna say a few things here. I'm from Memphis, Tennessee, originally. Uh, I've been in apartment complexes majority of my life. I'm, uh, I'm fifty-four years old. Um, I wanna kinda address something that you made a remark, or yes, we don't know what kind of apartments these are gonna be, okay? But I can tell you that being where I've lived in the Memphis, East Memphis area, Cordova area, uh, some of the elite, nicer areas of Memphis, I, I have seen where these type of apartments can change rapidly.
Ah, right.
Crime becomes a major issue, drugs becomes a major issue. Uh, it, it degrades a lot of the, of the area that its effect, it's kinda like cancer. Um, Mall of Memphis, eighteen million dollar mall, shut down, okay? There's a, uh, the, that mall was probably one of the elite of the elite. It was a two-story mall, uh, very elite, nice area. That was, within a seven-year time period, was overcome by drugs, prostitution. Um, the other mall in East Memphis also closed on Winchester, uh, due to the two apartment complexes that were built in that area. Did not start out like we're talking about the low income. It was a very nice apartment complex, and it changed. And I think, you know, when we, when we look at things, we don't think about what's ha, gonna happen seven years, ten years down the line. You know, what I look at is, is that I moved from a, an area that was severely changed drastically and came to this area here and moved here and probably would never leave this area. I loved this area. I never, didn't even know a place like this existed. Um, you know, I understand why the apartments need to be built. It's all about revenue. I know you're trying to make money.
Yes, I addressed myself.
But you know what? Thirteen hundred houses are gonna be built.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you start looking at the property taxes and everything that's involved, the families coming in, the military coming in, you know, th- this is becoming the most desired place for all ethnic groups, you know? The recently here, we just, we just found out there's gonna be a, 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 a high lift of Koreans moving in here, you know? I'm not Korean, I'm Asian, I'm Chinese, uh, I don't sound it, but, you know, you know, I, I'm, I'm actually proud to be here. And, you know, when, when I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm mingling and meeting people of different ethnic groups, i- this is what I'm proud of. I want people to live in Prattville, you know? I spent all my money in Ataga County. I mean, Elmore County's right over there. So, you know, what, why can't we just do the right thing? I mean, you know, I understand you need to make money, you know, find another location.
Please, I'm sorry.
I, I, for one, I really don't care about the Fire Department. You wanna put a police station over there, then let's talk about something else.
Yeah, but the police addressed me, not, not anyone else.
The whole thing is, is that, you know, we just wanna kinda do the right thing for the whole community and for this, this city.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm Wanda Ellis. I'm actually a Realtor in Montgomery for Caldwell Bankertown Realty.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, just to address property values and items like, when I go out and take a client to show a new house, which I've shown, I do Prattville, Millbrook, everywhere, you know, Tri-County area is my territory, we look at the client saying, I don't want to live here because there's an apartment complex there. And it's like he said, it can change overnight, go from a nice, upscale community, and it's just the turnover in residents every year, and it doesn't matter. They may be good people to begin with, it just starts going down and down. And that, then the neighborhood doesn't sell that's next to it because they don't want those, to have, you know, buyers don't wanna go into there because there is that apartment complex. Tax bracket then goes down for the income for the county, the city, and everybody that's involved.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the residents don't want their property base. I moved from Montgomery from an area that was where I thought I was gonna be until they carried me out in the box.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that neighborhood was close to an apartment complex, and it rapidly went down. And gunfire, we had a bullet come through our backyard from the apartment complex. I said, it's time to get out here. Can't have the children, and don't. But I wanna keep Prattville community-based, and I think homes do that better than apartments. And I think we need to see about getting that fixed for us.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's John Kuschusko. I live at 1607 Trolley Road in River Chase North. A lot of people are concerned with the housing and whatnot. What about the children? You build this apartment complex, now you're bringing more kids. Prattville's already at a seven, eight school. How many more kids are they gonna try to jam in a classroom to give them an education? Those kids are our leaders for generations to come. If they don't get the right education now, where are we gonna be ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Lee.
I'm John Lee Finnegan. I live at 211 Deer Trace. I'm lucky, 'cause I live right over here, I won't have this problem. Um, when I first read about this and I looked at it, and of course, I've also been up here talking about the Rochester Hills, which is the one that went by Pecan Ridge. I talked about the Swan Property, um, which is now going in, excuse me, Rocky Mount and Old Farm Lane. And at that time, they were saying that Old Farm Lane is gonna be developed into a lot of multi, excuse me, multifamily apartments. And we don't, and we don't really know what kinda units are going in there. However, if you look at the map, you see where Long Lewis is gonna be, the big piece of property on the left, and many, many rumors have been that it's gonna be a big box. They talk about Costco, Sam's, et cetera. If you think that there's gonna be high-end apartments behind a car dealership and a big box, I think you're sadly mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
The main reason I had, um, contacted some people was I think about congestion. This area is blocked by 65, and in fact, I hardly even come down off of 65 onto 14 at night because it's so dangerous. night because it's so dangerous. The traffic is unbelievable. We now have a new Burger King going in. Also, if you look at the piece of property to the right of it, is a lot of vacant land. Is that going to be developed? You talked about Old Ridge Road, that is still a single lane. When I was talking about Rochester Hills, I'd asked when McQueen Smith was going to be widened, who knows? So who knows when Old Ridge Road is going to be widened also? The main thing is the congestion is going to be tremendous. I contacted the police department and asked them for a breakdown of just accidents. On Highway 14, although they did say this number includes all areas, intersections in and around the streets listed, on Highway 14, in six months, there's been 34. This past year, there's been 61. On McQueen Smith, there was 82. In six months, the whole year has been 138. Who knows what's going to happen? And I don't know if any of you have driven on Highway 14 around. In fact, I actually stopped into Cracker Barrel because I like to see what things they have. And luckily, I make a right turn because I'm scared to death to cross that highway. Also, there was talk about the schools. I wonder about the city's systems. We, there's talk about the fire department, but also what about the sewage system, the water system, all that? Is that going to be able to handle it? Because it's now also going to be picking up those homes along McQueen Smith, those apartments along Queen Smith. Also with the units, when it says a hundred to a, excuse me, a hundred to 150, is that one bedroom? Is that two bedroom? Is that three or more? Then you start multiplying the cars by that. Also, just within the last two weeks or so, again, I live up in Hunting Ridge, we had three car break-ins. I found a full clip of 45 bullets in my yard raking it because they had stolen it from the house three houses up from me, the gun. They had broken into the thing. Who knows what this is going to bring? Also, if we're going to have the big box there, people are going to come from all over, they're going to see a lot of opportunity. So I really, really feel we need to put a hold on this. West Prattville, lots of space to build apartments there, talking about doing the South Industrial Park, how convenient for workers if they were living over here. So I really, really, truly feel that you need to take a good, long, hard look at what you're going to be putting in there.
We will. Thank you. Thank you, John Lee.
My name is Earl Wise. I live at 803 Bluegrass Drive. I just am tired of free stuff, and I came to the realization that if it were Section Eight, it's investors who like to get their check from the government, and it's time that I'm sick of a whole bunch of stuff, you know? We've given about everything we can, and so I'm just opposed to anything like that in the whole Prattville area, you know? You know, it's just time, it comes to a place where I think each person needs to pay their own way. So that's just a general comment for the whole area.
Thank you, Mr. Wise.
My name is Sean Locklear. I live at 1862 Calumet Parkway in Hollybrook for about 15 years now. I have enjoyed a lovely community that when I first saw it 15 years ago, I thought to myself, you know what? This is a classy little neighborhood, and it's not too expensive. I think I can afford it. Certainly, I didn't see any mansions in there, unlike across the street at Pendlebrook and Glenbrook. Some of those folks got some pretty nice houses. But, you know, if we didn't stand up for what we what we believe in and what we know to be good and true, we would not only be surrounded by the interstate on one side and apartments over there on the other side of Old Ridge Road, but we'd now be surrounded by apartments perhaps on a third side. My belief is, is that we have to continue in this fight, we have to continue to struggle. And I know that all of us have, nobody that's gotten up here has said anything that you haven't heard before, that you don't understand. I understand also that the, as the planning commission, this is not the end of our fight. You guys are going to make a recommendation, recommendation to the city council.
Thank you.
And that's when we have to show up again, and there'll be another public hearing. So I trust that as you guys gather data between now and then, in addition to what we've already said, that you'll make the right decision. I haven't heard anybody make any recommendations. I understand the reality that as Hollybrook stops and Highway 14 is over there, and there's commercial on the other side of that road, that we've got to have something in there to transition us from residential to that commercial.
Absolutely.
So now, I would, I would, I'd put 100 bucks on a bet that Mr. Speaks would not want to have the land next to his neighborhood rezoned as R4. But I would like to make a suggestion that if Laney is willing to donate some property for a fire station, they could throw in some other donated property for perhaps a park for the kids.
Yeah.
Perhaps some classy office space could go there instead. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that we understand that, you know, everybody has to start out in an apartment when they're young and, and don't make a lot of money. And I lived in an apartment with, for the first five years of my 30-year marriage, got, I got stolen from twice in four years. I understand crime is part of apartment complexes and other neighborhoods, but I know Hollybrook has been about 98% crime-free for the 15 years that I've lived there, and I like that.
We like it.
How you doing? My name is Leroy Davis, and I live at 758 Glenbrook Boulevard.
So I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell you a quick story about, I have a house over in Millbrook right now that I have tenants in that it won't pay me. I left Millbrook about eight, nine years ago, let's say 10 to 12, and went military. I worked for the military. Went to Cuba, went to Germany. But when I decided to come back to Alabama, I have a high school football player over there, Prattville High School. And I, he was not there then, but I was deciding where I wanted to live, okay? Now, did I want to go back to Millbrook, or did I want to go to Prattville? I remember going to the football games, watching Prattville play over there, and watching the, just watching the totally different atmosphere that we have here in Prattville, and that's why I decided to move to Prattville. I decided to move in the neighborhood that I live in now because it's a nice neighborhood. You know, it's, it's a step up from where I was over in Millbrook. In Millbrook, like they're saying now, I, there was a, there was apartment complexes right across the street from my house over in Millbrook, okay? So, but everything, the whole atmosphere, everything is different over there. You know, guys are working on blocks and cars and all that kind of stuff, you know? Junk is on the street, the whole nine yards. But over here, you know, in Prattville, where I chose to live because I wanted my son to go to a really good school that had good football. So Kingston Davis, by the way. So, so I'm with everybody here, and I know you've heard everybody say the same kind of stuff, but we're, we're coming up here because we want to emphasize that. You know, we want to emphasize that we truly do not want that type of property near our property. When we just moved in, I've just been there three years. We just moved in. And we, we have a 4,000 square foot home, man, it's nice. And then, you know, I don't want to have to look outside there or drive down the corner there, and there's a, you know, low-income Section Eight housing, you know? I don't have a problem with that. I understand people need help because guess what? I, my mom was on welfare at one time. My mom went to school and college, the whole nine yards, and now she has a master's degree, you know? So I, I understand people need help, but I think we just need to make sure we put those type places in, in areas other than areas like where we live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
My name is Kristy Curry. I live at 382 Sidney Drive South in Glenbrook, and I just have one question, which would be concerning the school system. I understand that we have first and second load for busing at this point. My daughter gets on at 6:00 AM because she's the first pickup, and she's dropped off at 4:00 PM because she's the last one off. So my question would be, will we be switching to first, second, and third load? Because if that's the case, at what time in the morning will my daughter get on the bus? And at what time in the evening will she get off? Because I totally am against her getting on the bus at 6:00 AM and getting off at 4:00. I think that's very excessive. I've never heard or lived in a city where there was first and second load. We've had one load. So that would be my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Ronald Johnson, and I've just moved to the area, so I'm the young kid on the block.
Yes, sir.
I'll give you a perspective to look at because I moved here in 1982. I'm from Atlanta. I can give you many examples of where low-income housing projects came in. The area's deteriorated, and y'all know that. And I want you to be responsible for your constituents. I saw a standing room when you asked them to stand, and I figured if you're gracious enough to stand, to sit here and listen to me, I'll give you my opinion. And you've, you've already said that you were. When I moved here in 82, I saw big houses come in, and in my backyard, behind it, in Atlanta, and housing projects also came in. The area's deteriorated. They grew so much trying to expand to get away from that area that they, in essence, outgrew their water supply. They have been trying since then to tap into the Chattahoochee River. My family moved to Hopewell. We were there 16 years. From there, when my daughter graduated, we moved to Montgomery to watch her graduate from college. We were in that home 11 years. So I'm the new kid here on the block. I have not moved around much. I'm here to stay. I would love to see y'all do what's right. You know that nobody in this media area has anything against apartment living. If it's quality apartments and there's someone that's there to monitor them, that's one thing. But when people set up shop and they set up these low-income housing structures, they deteriorate. People don't love it like they used to. They don't take care of it like they used to. The whole area starts deteriorating. And I would applaud y'all as a commission because we've tried to get in the Prattville area since 1987. Things were so expensive then, and we couldn't get here. We ended up building in Hopewell. But I don't want to take you up too much more of your time because when we moved here, we saw something altogether different. People were taking pride in their communities. I can, I can tell you four subdivisions in this area that I think there's anybody living there that would be affected, they would be against it as well. I think with a time study, you would find that evidence already proven to you with, with signatures to back it up. I hope that you would do what's right, and I just thank you for the job you've already done.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Yes.
I have one curious question. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this complex besides the owner?
All right. Well, okay, we're gonna, yeah, come on. Come on, absolutely. Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Smith, I apologize. William Mayfield.
Yes, sir, Ms. Mayfield.
Uh, sir, I forgot to tell you earlier, you know, economic reasons why we shouldn't do this, but there's eight apartment complexes within two miles.
Oh, yes, I read your email.
Now, I called those eight apartment complexes, and they all have openings. So I think it would be a disservice to the owners of those apartments to make another one.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, that's good.
So, please for Otoga County's future, for the city of Prattville's future, and especially for our future, please vote no on this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. That doesn't mean anybody move, it's just the public hearing portion is going to be closed. We do need to read this in, I take it, do we? I already got you to read once. Mr. Bowles, can you read it down for me?
Mr. Langley's Properties LTD has applied for zoning of properties shown in Attachment A. And whereas the property in to be zoned is located inside of city limits at the northeast corner of Old Ridge Road and Riverton Drive, and whereas petitioner wishes to zone the property to R4 multifamily residence, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by Prattville Planning Commission on May 21st, 2015. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommend the zoning of said property to be R4.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Duke, do you have anything, or you want to go to the petitioner, or do you have anything you want to tell us?
Whichever way you'd like to proceed.
Let's go with it. Let's, let's hear from him.
We're going to try to talk about a couple of questions that were brought up in the public hearing, just to make sure that everybody's clear. There, there is not a proposal for this property. So we're talking about some, something's an abstract, and so just to make sure there's not a pending proposal, I believe that Mr. Gillen stated that the applicant is looking to just rezone this property. Charles.
Yes, sir.
So the important thing for the commission to understand, and certainly for residents to understand, is that we're talking about a request for a rezoning to R4. Now, this commission has seen rezoning requests for various properties many times, and that's the process. It sometimes is business, sometimes it's for residential, sometimes it's for R2, which is where most of these folks live, or R3, which is what is prevalent most of Glenbrook. So there's always a rezoning process, and so that's what the applicant is looking for because, and this speaks to Mr. Davis's statement, and just to make sure, I vaguely remember a conversation with him, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. There is no reservation of property nor the Long Lewis Ford property, other than the fact that basically that's the line where the frontage against 14 is zoned for business now. The property between there and Hollybrook and the other subdivisions is currently zoned FAR, okay? So that, what that means is that's restricted to a very large lot residential-type development. It's a holding-type zoning, okay? Forest agricultural recreation. So at some point, Mr. Laney's going to have to come back or wish to come back and ask for this property to be zoned for something that is more appropriate, whether it's commercial or R4. This is just a natural part of the development of that property. In your staff report, there is a, there's a copy of the 2008 sketch plan that was presented by Mr. Laney, and you can see there that that's basically the way this property has progressed, that the road that's going through that is being jointly built jointly by the city in Otoga County is in roughly that same spot. There is discussion at that time about what these other properties might be. So that is a discussion that we're entering. Mr. Laney has offered a request to rezone that to R4. That does not seem like that is a, a choice that, that is popular with the neighborhood, but it is a part of the discussion at this point, and that's, that's, that's your role. That is your role is to sit here and to discuss that. So two things I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, I'd like to talk about the request that's been made, and then also about what might be appropriate for the commission to do as far as looking at the rest of the property, including this piece of property. It's been mentioned in the public hearing, and I'll just start there. There is a comprehensive plan that you adopted. Some of you were here for the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 96. All of you, I think, except for Mr. Hyman, who's getting a nice inauguration on his first day on the commission, were here when we adopted the comprehensive plan update in 2010. That comprehensive plan, and you have a copy of the future land use map. That comprehensive plan, and you have a copy of the future land use map in the staff report, shows this area, and, and not just the Laney property, but generally this area of fourteen being commercial. And if you read the narrative in the, in the comprehensive plan, you'll find that the reason being is that we have about two thousand houses that are gonna be built roughly north of, of this area. There needs to be some area that's set up to service that, those commercial needs. If you think about areas where you've seen growth in the past, you, in, in our past growth, our past decades of growth have been along Jasmine Trail and Greystone, and then up and down McQueen Smith Road. You've seen commercial entities come in to service that growth. Areas such as this is needed for the growth that's coming. So, that's the purpose, or that's the reason it was reserved for that basically in the, the comprehensive plan. Now, apartments have been used at various times in, in these areas to kind of serve as a, as a land use transition. And that kind of leads me into my next discussion, is that ideally you would not, if you were looking at this today, and you were studying, setting up with a blank sheet of paper, you would not move directly from commercial into low-density residential. We're faced with a situation, the Hollybrook neighborhood was basically built in the early nineties, and it sat out there, as some of these folks know, as an island. I mean, it was, it was the only thing there. They could easily walk up and down Old Ridge Road without seeing another car for a couple of minutes. So, that's probably not the way that we would've looked at this area if we'd looked at it from a comprehensive standpoint. But this is what we're faced with now. So, we have to decide, how's the best way to make that transition, to make sure that property values for both the, the Laney property and for the folks that live in Hollybrook are, are maintained. I'll echo the other issue about apartments, this area is kind of cut off, and apartments do better when they are part of a, pretty much a neighborhood, part of a community. And the way that they're basically set up. Make sure I finish what I'm saying.
Yes.
The, the apartments, and when I say apartments, just to make sure I'm clear, higher-density housing, we, there is a, a spectrum of housing that we're talking about here. In, in these neighborhoods alone, we have different levels of housing, different densities, okay? And we are in, in effect, looking at a changing market over time. So, this is a discussion that the Planning Commission is gonna need to have, not necessarily about this piece of property, but about others, about how we accommodate different densities of housing, whether they're rental or ownership, but there are, there is a demand for different densities and, and types of, of living. Residential does well when it is basically with other residential, let's put it that way, instead of trying to say apartments. In this case, if we were to set up an area of, of residential here, we are essentially cutting it off, okay? While it abuts other residential, it doesn't necessarily relate to the other residential, okay? There's no.
That's true.
There's no public space here, okay? We're basically backing private space up to private space. There's no road connection here. These folks would be essentially cut off from any of the, the residential. That, that roadway that is difficult to cross for, for an adult is definitely a barrier for a child. It is definitely a barrier for somebody of, on up in age that is not able to, to sprint across the roadway. So, this area would be basically cut off. And so, from that standpoint, it is not a good candidate for any type of residential, whether we said an R4, an R3, R2, something like that. So, I think it's important that the Planning Commission takes some time, and certainly take this opportunity that Mr., that the Laney family has given us, to talk about their property and what might be the appropriate zoning. That, that is your role as a commission, is to provide some advice, some recommendation to the City Council. They, they ultimately have the policy vote on whether or not it goes for what Mr., excuse me, what the Laney family is asking for, or something different. I just wanna kind of reiterate that again, you have the ability to approve what is requested, to basically make a recommendation against it, or recommend some other kind of modification. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump around, but whatever goes here, there needs to be some.
Buffer.
Transition. There needs to be some better transition between, you know, if we came back and said this is gonna be V2, well, that's a wide-open category. I'll give you an example. And because Prattville has gone through about now three decades of different types of growth, we have good examples, and I'll just point to the, the Old Food World where the, where the bowling alley is. Some of those properties back right up to single-family residential. I, I've heard some negative comments about apartments, but I could, I can take you to some places where we get same negative comments about dumpster pickups at three AM, or about the bread deliveries at four AM, and that person's just doing their job, so that's, those folks don't think about that, but that's a disturbance to the adjacent neighborhood. So, we need to think about how well this is, is done. Anyway, Mr. Chair, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillen, or is it, Mr. Stephen, would y'all like to speak? Okay. I would like to ask you one thing, if you can come up, please. Perhaps we can come up with a solution between us and the Laney's for, for the use of that property, and, and we might be able to guide into something. It does not appear that the neighboring residents are in favor of R4, and I don't think you're gonna get the votes to get it that way from us today. I don't, nobody else will do it. Yes, sir.
Well, I, I guess I'd make one suggestion.
Yes, sir.
I think on behalf of Mr. Laney, if you took this to committee, so that this group could thoroughly discuss this situation, and give Mr. Laney some direction as to, as to word ahead with this, because we would like to benefit from this meeting.
Right.
To make sure that we're coming up with a process that works.
And we want something, I understand he would like to do something with it, other than it be vacant land, and I understand that, but it appears that R4 is just not the, the way we need to go. Is there, there, is there a?
Call for the question.
Yeah, we can call for the question and, and not the.
Let's see, would anybody else wanna speak?
From him?
Well, on, on the commission, someone else may help.
Oh, go ahead, you got something? What'd you wanna say?
Thank you, Mr. Gillen, and thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
This property need to be used for something, in, in something positive, and, and I guess if we kind of flip the script just a little bit, and my question would be hypothetical, but if it was apartments over there already, with this many resident, move where the apartments And, and my answer would be, I don't think so.
Yeah.
So, the suggestion I think's on the floor is that if we form a committee and talk to Mr. Gillen, so we can properly try to find a use for this property, so it, when it goes away, it would go away properly in the proper setting, much rather than just stand still.
I understand, I agree. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I do agree with, with Mr. Rubin, but I would like to call for the question and, and move forward.
All right. Question has been called. All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed like sign. Mr. Duke, Mr. Duke, is there anything that you would like to add on miscellaneous items that, that also record show that that motion did fail?
Excuse me, Lisa, do they have copies of this replat? I'm disappointed they don't wanna hear about the replat at the TV. Now, you have before you another minor miscellaneous item, housekeeper, you have a request to replat, you have a request to replat lots three and four of Eastwood Phase Two, replat, replat that into one lot.
Yeah, let's give them a couple of minutes. Go ahead. Do you wanna let everybody leave that wants to leave?
Mr. President, if you wouldn't mind, you know, could you announce that the outcome of this, and that they're free to leave at this time?
Yeah, they are, I thought, that y'all are free to, y'all can stay, of course, and we got a couple other miscellaneous items, but that motion did fail. Thank you for coming, but y'all, you are free to leave. That was fine. I tried to go to committee, but we have the politicians on that end, so. Oh, I think we are, I, I did try that, but we, I think we might do that. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is still in session. If you, if you're departing, please do so, but we still have a meeting going forward. I agree. But, all right, Joel, let's go. Yeah.
Mr. Smith, let's just go ahead and make sure that we're clear that this item that you just voted on, the rezoning.
Yes.
Since you did make a recommendation against, that recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council, they will read it at their first meeting on June the second.
Yes.
And then it will come up for actual vote, and a public hearing on July the seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure somebody will listen to that on YouTube, and we'll.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have before you a replat, it's joining two lots together in the Eastwood Suddivision. City has, city staff has looked at this, we see no reason for any objection, and ask that you approve that by a simple motion and a vote.
Okay. Your motion, your request?
Mr. Chairman, I still move.
All right. Second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed like sign.
Hang on.
Down.
I'm sorry, are we adjourned, or what? Mr. Chair, are we still in session, or?
I'm being adjourned.
Okay, well, I'll just.